It's a little bit after six o'clock. We do have a quorum, so we're going to go ahead and get started. We'll call the Johnson City Council Work Session number 22-01 to order. Send your roll call, please.
Councilmember Cope?
Here.
Martin?
Ready?
Here.
Burkhart?
Here.
Evans?
We have several items on the agenda this evening, so we'll need to move through them pretty efficiently. The first one that we have up is the Bonsak and Fromelt LLP presentation of the June 30, 2021 audit. Teresa, do you kick this off?
I certainly do.
Want to be over there by your. And if you just look at.
And I'm not sure which one of these you want.
Oh, she doesn't have it?
No.
Oh, okay. All right. Should have sent it to her today. Thank you for having us tonight. It's an honor to present your June 30, 2021 financial statements. Want me to talk louder? All right. If you turn to the first page in your graph, it's our required communications as your auditors to you, the board. This year, when we came out to do the audit, we actually had to do three different types of audits. The first one is your financial statement audit. We have issued an unmodified opinion on that audit, which is the highest form of opinion that you can receive. So that's considered a clean opinion, if you will. The next type of audit that we do is called a government auditing standards audit. And the purpose of that really is twofold. One is to test your compliance with laws and regulations. You had no findings in regard to laws and regulations. The second part is to look at your internal control system and to test it to make sure that it's functioning as it was designed. In the past years, you had three findings under the internal control piece of that. This year, all three of those findings have been corrected. So again, that's a very good report. The city has worked hard to segregate the duties so that you have compensating controls in place. And this year, you had over 750,000 in federal awards that were expended. Actually, you had 800,000. So we were required to do a single audit. And this year, we selected the largest of those, which was the which was the COVID-19 coronavirus relief fund, which made up 536,000 of the 800,000 that you expended this year. And we tested the federal program and also had no findings. So again, a very clean report. Any questions on that piece of it? Okay. If not, I was just going to go through three graphs that kind of summarized your financials for this year. The first one is looking at the governmental fund revenues. This year, your total revenues were 36 million compared to about 34.2 million in the previous year. That's about a $1.8 million increase or about 5%. If you look across, you'll see that the majority of that is in the other city taxes, which increased about $1.4 million. This is primarily your local option sales tax. That revenue was about 1.3 million last year, which was the first year of that. This year, it was about 2.7 million. So a nice increase. Also, as you look, the intergovernmental increased about 1.4 million. And that's your federal COVID money that I was referring to earlier, along with some FEMA money. And also, your Urbandale project reimbursements come through intergovernmental. And this was somewhat offset by your property tax, which decreased about 360,000. Your taxable assessed value went up about 5%, but the city had decreased their rate about 9%. So that makes up for the decrease. The next page is looking at your expenditures. I'm sorry. I'm going from the handout. I will be on page four of that handout. Page four is the governmental funds expenditures. Your total expenditures for 2021 were 43.8 million compared to 2020, which was 55.7 million. But as you look across, you can quickly see that the majority of that decrease was in debt service. Last year, had refunded 5.8 million of the Series 2012 bonds and 12.4 million of the Series 2013 B bonds. And the purpose of that was to reduce debt service payments over the 13 years that followed that refunding by 4.1 million dollars. So last year, you saw a huge spike in your debt service because of those refundings. And this year, you're back more to the normal debt service track. The only other thing to mention there, you'll see an increase in community development, about 1.8 million. That's your projects that are going on in your urban renewal tax district. Next page, on page five, is looking at your enterprise funds. So your water fund, your sewer fund, and your stormwater fund. The water fund's net position increased by about 1.2 million dollars. The sewer fund's net position increased by about 1.3 million. And the stormwater's net position increased about 1.2 million. And the main reason for these were capital contributions of about 2.9 million. So that's a combination of developer contributions and also projects that are completed by your capital projects funds of the cities and then donated back to these enterprise funds as part of their systems. The other good thing to report about your enterprise funds is that they generated positive net cash flow from each of the operations, which again, is a very positive trend to look at. So all in all, a really good report for the city this year. Have any questions? I'm happy to answer them. Council, have any questions? Well, thank you very much. We appreciate a very, very good report. And thank you for presenting it. And, you know, compliments to our staff for always, you know, keeping things in good shape for us and obviously doing what we need to to make sure that we have a good report. So thanks, everyone. Is that on... Teresa, is that it for that? Okay. Okay, well, let's move on to some of the budget requests this evening. The first one up is the Johnson Economic Development Corporation FY '23 budget request. Do we have anyone here from JEDCO? Okay, well, let's move on to the chair of Congress then. I know they're here.
Thank you for having us. My name's Alan Graham, representing the president of the chamber in the year 2022.
And I'm Heather Goodwin. I'm the executive director for the chamber.
So yeah, so I think you have a letter in front of you are asked for participation in our budget of $10,000. And just here to ask if there's any questions, clarifications that we can make.
Alan, I see it's an increase of about $2,000. Can you quickly explain what goes into that increase?
That increase basically is to help offset some of the decreases that we've seen in sponsorships the last two years during the pandemic for events, even though our membership has been able to maintain its current level. Some of our sponsorships have certainly dropped. And one of our big fundraising events, which, as you know, is Green Days, was barely able to just hit above break even. And we don't anticipate a lot of change in those trends for this coming year either. So that's the reason that we decided that we would increase it by a little. That would be enough to offset one medium to large sponsorship for one of our events in case, you know.
Any other questions, council?
I do have one question. I'm assuming you're paid staff for the...
I'm paid staff, yeah.
And is there a projection as to what salary increase you might experience there? I mean, so just so I can get a feel of where we might be on that scale? Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
The next one that we have listed is the Johnson Community School Community Education Budget Request.
Hello. My name is Scott Krutoff. I'm the director of the Community Education Department. Been in the department for about three years. Served as a director for two now. If you think back to when COVID shut down schools, that's about when I became the director. So it's been an interesting ride so far. I also remembering back to when we did this last year and it was all over Zoom. I can share as much or as little information as you're interested in hearing. So if you, anything you want to know, please feel free to feel free to ask and I can sort of elaborate and let you know whatever you're, like I said, whatever you're interested in. Wanted to say thank you. The community school district, community ed, and the city have enjoyed a partnership. And the 2080 agreement has been in place for 30-plus years. That's a long time for any agreement. I just talked about my sort of change in leadership. I suspect that none of you were around 30 years ago when that was put into place. So there's been lots of opportunity for changes in understanding, changes in situations where that could have been sort of fallen by the wayside. And I'm sure there was tons of excuses along the way that that could have been convenient or happened, but it didn't. I appreciate that and just want to say thank you. Because you're new, because I'm relatively new, wanted to give you just a big picture of what I feel like community education is, what I hope you feel like community education is. Our schools are uniquely positioned to serve as community centers in communities. A part of that comes from, if you just think about geographically where schools pop up. We plan schools and we build schools where our families are, where it's accessible for kids to walk to. So if we can get our schools to function as more than just classrooms, if they can be community centers where kids already see, families already see schools as safe places, as common grounds where they can come to. And their schools are already, they're already there, right? They've already been invested in. It's not a new thing that somebody has to come along and develop. So if we can already take, if we can take this community resource and make it more than just a classroom, that's what I feel like community education is. That's the value I hope to bring, bring to the community of Johnston by having a successful and hopefully relevant department to what we're doing. So I included a budget summary there for you. If you look, scroll, if you look towards the bottom, there's a brief history, or I think it's 10 years of what the history has been. You'll notice it's kind of incremental. Several years and then 2021, last year happened, and there's a drop off. Part of that is COVID. We were doing less. We were outputting less. And so our expenses went down, which means what we were asking for from the city went down. The increase back for this current fiscal year is $79,243. That's a reflection of us sort of returning back to more of a normal level of operation for us. In big pictures without sort of bogging down details, there's the program side of what we do. And I would say the program side of what we do, we are very close to being back to normal pre-COVID participation volume. So in preschool, swim lessons, facility rentals, youth basketball, all those in-person enrichment, recreation things. Those have all sort of popped back and people are eager for in-person things. ATC is Kids Team Connection, Kids Connection. That's our foreign after-school childcare. By far and away, that's the largest program that we do, both in volume and revenue. Pre-COVID, you've got the summary there, I guess, of all the programs that we do. Pre-COVID, we had 863 kids. Contract, means we're serving 863 kids before COVID sort of shut everything down. The COVID year almost isn't worth talking about because of all the starts and stops that we had. The different, every learning model that we came back with required a different childcare plan. And so it's tough to compare apples to oranges or apples to apples for that year. So pre-COVID, you'd say our normal was 863 families, kids on contract. This year, right before winter break, we're at 517. So our largest program is about 60% volume of what it was pre-COVID, which is a sustainable place for us, but it's not, it's not where we were. It's not where we'd like to be. It's not where we'd hope to be in the future. So that kind of gives you an idea. Other than that, I think our number one focus right now is refining that financial sustainability for ourselves and sort of being critical in that. Like if we were athletics department, KTC would be our college football. And when they're not generating revenue and performing sort of at the same levels as we had, we've got to be more critical about everything else that we do and make sure that we're, I guess, being responsible and making good critical choices about what's worth our energy and resources and what's not at this point. And that's our, I don't know, that's our focus moving forward and our number one priority now. So I would be happy to answer any questions.
Does council have any questions for Scott?
Yes, Scott, first of all, I just want to salute kind of the attitude and approach that you're taking of sort of recognizing that school facilities are community facilities. And I think that's really a great approach. You know, you think about the funding for school facilities, a lot like the funding for city facilities, property tax dollars. And granted, this Johnson School District footprint's a little bit larger than the city of Johnston. But if you live in the city of Johnston, you are in the Johnston School District, which is really kind of cool. A lot, if you live in Urbandale, you can be in like eight different school districts. Maybe not that high, but it's a lot. But it's one of the things I think that really makes Johnston special is that if you live in Johnston today, you're in the Johnston School District. And my kids are almost all the way through the Johnson School Districts. But I've seen, you know, KTC and other programs that you guys provide. But really appreciate your attitude and approach of thinking about these facilities as not just, you know, hey, once that bell shuts down at 2:50 or whenever the elementary bell is now, that we're done. Because you guys play such an important role and provide a safe place for kids, a safe, a place for kids to learn and grow and develop. Not just those kids who need after-school activities, but other stuff. So really appreciate that approach. And I think the partnership is really important. Just wanted to pass that along.
I'd like to piggyback on what Councilman Cope said. He mentioned, and I appreciate, and have been a very recent beneficiary of your kid programming activities, having two of my own. But I also appreciate the adult activities that are incorporated in it. And with that being said, obviously, I serve on that advisory committee and hope that we can continue to try to brainstorm ways not only to better and continue to serve all the residents of Johnston through our contribution, but generally what you program, but also ways that we can make sure that the city of Johnston knows that the city contributes to a lot of those community activities. I heard on many occasions, hey, why doesn't the city do this? Why doesn't the school does that? And so there's some reeducation that needs to go on there, too. So I challenge you and charge you to some extent to be creative in how we can continue, not only to give credit where credits do, but also that we can continue to be that good partner, both within our fiscal contributions, but also with some of the beautiful resources that our city has to be able to supplement that.
And I'll just add, Scott, that I do appreciate what community education does in terms of community engagement. You know, I look at the list that you've provided here, Kites on the Green, Sunday in the Park, Johnson Green Days. I mean, those are the kinds of activities that bring our community together. And you're personally involved in many of those. So thank you very much for that. And also, I received my copy of Connections, I think, late last week. And I was pleased to see that a lot of the programs that we, you know, had in the past are out there again and available for our residents, whether they're young or old. You know, I signed up for beekeeping and I signed up for pickleball. So, you know, I'll be there. So thank you. Thank you again for doing that.
Madam Mayor, just one other note. I just want to make sure the council is aware of this. Councilman Burkhart, you haven't been through the budget process before. But as Scott mentioned, we do have a long-term agreement that we have with the school district. And so this request is a little bit different from the other ones that you're going to hear this evening because we do actually have an agreement with the school district that describes, you know, what our funding level is. And although the agreement is a little bit dated, it still is in effect. And you can actually see, as Scott pointed out, that one year that it went down is because their expenses went down. So our contribution went down that particular year. So but I just want to make sure that everybody's aware that there is an actual agreement we have in place regarding the funding of the community education program.
As a point of procedure, just out of curiosity, do we pay something like this in a lump sum quarterly? How does the city, you know, go about engaging in our obligatory commitment on that agreement?
It's a good question. Teresa, is this a...
It's an annual payment?
Okay.
And usually, the school requests their payment towards the end of the fiscal year. Other organizations ask at different times. Now, based on the recent opinion by the state auditor and others, we've asked for more documentation from other organizations. But regarding the schools, I usually gets their payment towards the end of fiscal year. Quite frankly, I usually have to call and tell them I need a bill.
So Teresa, they would not receive this payment until almost June of 2023? Oh, okay. Any other questions, council? Thank you, Scott. Greater Des Moines Partnership.
Here, councilmembers. Thanks for having us this evening. My name's Jay Byers and present CEO of the Greater Des Moines Partnership. I know most of you, but really appreciate our longtime relationship we've had with the city of Johnston and really appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Leading our presentation tonight will be Brian Crowe, who is our Executive Vice President of Economic Development, who's been with us now just over a year and doing a fantastic job. Excuse me, but his wife is the French teacher at Johnston High School.
Oh.
So a great connection. And I wore my purple just to be honest.
Good evening, mayor and council. Pleasure to be with you tonight. My wife, my better half, she goes by Madame Crowe. So that's, if you don't know the connection, that's her given name at Johnston High School. Thanks for having us tonight. We really do appreciate, as Jay said, the partnership with the city of Johnston. Thing that I've come to recognize, being here just about a year in Greater Des Moines, is the tremendous connections, I think, between the cities and the counties and everyone who works at economic development and how strong that really is between all of the partners that involve both on the public and on the private side. And I think that the reason there's been great success in this region over the last 20 years really has been a lot of the public-private partnerships that exist. And so our team, the economic development team, we're seven people. And we focus on everything from entrepreneurship to helping existing companies grow in capital investment, job creation, but then also working to try to attract new companies here as well. And so through those efforts, there's a variety of things that we do to try to bring attention to our region, either through broadband studies or working with Ernst &amp; Young and trying to define the industries of the future and our targeting for the future, how we continue to grow that, how we work with our existing companies to make sure that they're, they understand that this is a pro-growth mindset area, that we like capital investment. We like new job creation. And, you know, we like to have R&amp;D happen here, which I know is so important to the city of Johnston and making sure that we continue on public policy efforts to make sure that those things like the R&amp;D tax credit remain in place for companies to do business here. And so, you know, just in kind of brief, you know, over the years, over the last five years, we've done a few projects here with the city of Johnston. You know, nearly $12 million in investment, 192 new jobs, 107,000 square feet or new or leased space. You know, we've worked to engage, you know, Adam is a great partner and co-chair of our Economic Development Practitioners Council, which serves our 10-county area. And when we bring together our economic development practitioners to talk about latest and greatest new best practices and how we work together to really promote the region and look for new opportunities for our area. So you'll see in our request, we kind of go through a lot of the metrics and a lot of the things that I've kind of mentioned here. But whether it's talent or public policy or working with small businesses, entrepreneurs, existing businesses, targeted sector companies, there's a thought that we do to try to bring value to the region. You'll see in our request, in the final paragraph, we do ask to go from the 5590 per year, which has been our standard over the last few years, to 10,000. That does bring Johnston more in line with many of our other suburban communities who are contributing to the partnership. And so with that, I'm happy to answer. We can answer any questions that you all might have. I do have a hard copy of our report. If anyone's interested, I'm happy to pass those out. It's okay that I approached the...
Why don't you give them to Cindy and she can provide them to us? Brian, I know in the past, we've seen the information on what the other suburb communities do provide so that we can see that comparison. I don't see it in the information that we have in front of us today. Can you get that to us? I know it's been several years since we've entertained an increase. So I think we need to see where we do stand amongst all of the other contributing communities and take that into consideration. Other questions?
Mayor, I have a question, not likely designated for our presenters directly, but is the contribution to the Greater Des Moines Partnership something that can be covered under TIF expenses? Since it has an economic development component?
Paid for, Councilman Burkhart, we currently pay this through our hotel motel tax.
Okay.
I'm not sure, Adam. It doesn't come from TIF. It comes from hotel motel tax.
And that's something that we can consider.
I don't know. I'd have to check on that.
Thank you.
I was going to ask a question in French, but my 1985 French class at Aurelia High School is kind of failing. Maybe it was better at Marcus Merton's leg or...
I probably remember as much out of my class, too. On Tell-a-Boo, that's about it.
Yeah, there we go.
Any other questions in English? I don't see any. Thank you very much. You bet.
Merci.
Okay, next up is the Johnson Arts Council.
Partnership.
Did I skip one? Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. I ran the two partnerships together.
Hello, mayor, city council. I want to start by saying thank you. All these familiar, friendly faces. Mayor Paula, an amazing month of December. Thank you so much for...
We did it together.
Now, you have to run all those miles.
I do.
Really sorry for that. I know you enjoy that. And again, all the different councilmen... Really sorry for that. I know you enjoy that. And again, all the different council members who sit here, who I know in all your ways have contributed and are very supportive of everything that we do. So, I wasn't going to go into detail. You know, it's a pretty simple ask that we've done in the past. We have continued to keep trucking along during the pandemic. The partnership has not lost a day of service during the entire pandemic. Being a mostly volunteer, you know, there's two part-time paid staff people and then all volunteers. So, we've been able to keep everybody safe and healthy, keep the doors open and keep serving people has been a huge win. We have kind of found ourselves over the past few years, more and more becoming a community hub. We're the place where people kind of go to when they don't know, you know, we're having an idea. We want to make sure we figure out how to help people do this, do that, be it in the school district, in the community. And they see a need and they come and ask us and we figure out a way to make it work. So, we're always willing to make those things work. We have, again, worked with the school districts for a majority of the things that we do outside of the pantry. We started our benevolence fund in 2020 with some of the local churches who found, you know, people coming to their door asking for help. So, we've been able to provide some emergency financial assistance that way. It has been remarkable to be able to help people when they just have that need that they can't figure out how to fill anywhere else. So, that's kind of where we, we see ourselves to be in the partnership, at the Johnston Partnership. So, if there's any questions...
Andrew, can you explain that a little bit?
I'm sorry?
More the benevolence fund. Can you explain how that works?
So, we have about five local churches who, the pastors felt, you know, people knock on the door at churches when they're looking for assistance. And the churches themselves, the pastors generally are the ones who fill that need. They never felt like they were doing a very good job of it. They might have money that their mission committee might set aside and say, give this to people who knock on the door. But if he's heading to a meeting or there's, you know, a week vacation, then there's nobody there to answer those needs. So, they came to us. We didn't know this was coming, but with the pandemic coming in 2020, it ended up being very good timing. They have committed at a certain dollar amount to support through their parish funding, however they make those decisions, to give that money to us. And then they trust us to administer that fund out. They set a basic set of rules that we have to abide by, report to them every quarter. And it's also something that we've had a lot of people in the community who have found to be something that they care a lot about and they contribute to.
So, if they need helping, their light bill or heating?
Done medical bills. We've done car repairs, light bills, rental assistance. Done just about everything you can think of that we can figure out how to help. The only thing they don't want to pay for is gas money. But other than that, we've done almost $44,000 through that fund in the past two years. So... In addition, all the other things with the pandemic, as everyone here knows, supplies are always a challenge. So, food supplies can be, you know, we're always looking ahead and trying to figure out. Partnering with D-Mark is our huge resource for that. And they have really helped make sure that we have what we need when we need it and conserve people regardless of when they come through our door. So...
How's your backpack program going?
Backpack program, it was interesting with the pandemic and with schools, you know, we were trying to figure out how to help them in any way we could. It was a big challenge because, again, this is very volunteer-based. Volunteers couldn't go into the schools. So, a lot of that work fell onto the staff for a year, which was very difficult for them. And we did everything we could to try to charge back into that arena this year. So, numbers fluctuated a lot just because between sick kids in and out of school, virtual, not virtual, all that kind of stuff. It was all over the place. We're starting to regain some of that momentum. I think the child tax credit has impacted those numbers a little bit, just because parents may not always have the need that they used to have. And we have expanded the program into every school. So, families can really pick and choose. If you've got three or four kids in the district, you may not need every child bringing it home. So, it just kind of depends on what best serves each family. And they have that ability to choose what works for them. So...
And my last question is, in terms of your operation, are you kind of open as, is it business as usual at all?
As open as we can be, yes. We are kind of limiting the number of people inside. And for the most part, people have abided by that. It isn't, we moved into new space during the pandemic, which is also fantastic because my gush, we needed that so badly. So, we have been able to fit more people inside. But we still do try to kind of space people out a little bit and kind of honor everybody's needs because we want people to feel comfortable. But we do have some people who still aren't coming back and we do figure out ways to serve them if they're not comfortable. We do deliver to AHEPA a couple of times a month to make sure that the residents there have enough. And yeah, we're just...
You deliver where?
To AHEPA.
Oh.
Yeah, every, every couple of times a month. This depends on what their needs are over there to keep them from having to, many of them have transportation issues already. It's something that we knew we needed to fill and the pandemic kind of forced us to figure out how to make it work. So...
Does anyone have any questions?
I don't have a question, Mayor, but I have just a moment of personal privilege. I thank you for all you do. I had the personal privilege back in, in mid-May to take a data walk with the, the D-Mark folks. And it was eye-opening to see both the numbers and especially the demographics of which you serve. And I am grateful for all the ways and for all the volunteers and for all the donations and even the city contribution, which is one just slight slice of all that comes in. Mayor, thank you for drawing this to everyone's attention through running and, and collecting funds. And I just, I appreciate it. I wish we didn't have to have a partnership. We know that isn't the case. And so, for having an organization that can step up and at least be that good steward on so many different fronts is wonderful. I appreciate all you do.
Thank you. We're always trying to put ourselves out of business is the goal.
Yeah, I would just add, I, I think anybody who ever, whenever you stop over at the partnership, you're always impressed by how many volunteers there are. It seems like the, the partnership is, if there's a program, I mean, like we have a lot of people in, in the community who like to be helpful. And the partnership is sort of a, sort of a, the program that gets drawn, a lot of that interest gets drawn to. So, in a lot of ways, that's, that's one of the nice things about having it available is it provides an opportunity for people that who want to be helpful to, to do.
Find a way to use everybody's. If they got an hour to give us, we'll take it. We average about 80 people a month to give at least an hour to the partnership. So...
I may have sent another volunteer your way. The other night when I was standing up at Fairway, a gentleman contributed some money and then he walked away. And then he came back and he says, how can I volunteer for the partnership? I said, well, just go out online. You'll find their website. You'll know when they're, you'll be able to find when they're open. And I said, just drop in and tell them you want to help.
Definitely. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Well, anything else, council? If not, thank you. And now, the Johnston Arts Council.
Thank you very much for having me. I'm Lisa Cooper. I'm president of the Johnston Arts Council. And I had three asks for our group for the budget. The first one is $250. We would just like to reinstate having cultural perform at Green Days on Thursday night. And that embraces performance art, which is an important part of the Arts Council experience. You can scroll to the next one. This was really popular. It's social distancing at its finest. We had, I'm trying to remember, 23, 25 artists. We think we can probably have capacity for 40 artists to have artwork around there and maybe even extended a month. We didn't know how long the, the paintings would last. So, basically, the materials cost is what is involved for this. So, the posts, the boards, we prime the boards. And then I give myself some sort of toxic shock by varnishing all those boards after the paintings are done. And then the next one is the big ticket item. We still have two sculptures that we would like to have installed at the entrance of 62nd and Mel Hay Road. The budget, I think we were going to have some money in the budget when the town center concept first started, but that kind of evaporated with ripples, but it was well worth it. And so, they'll be at the entrance and probably flank either side of the entrance. So, we already had RFPs from artists that were sent in when they first submitted for the original large sculpture. So, some people just submit for the smaller sculptures. I don't think we were in love with any of them and we probably, some time has passed because we, you know, we didn't know when this would happen. So, I'm thinking, and Rhonda's on the group, that we'll probably do RFPs again. And one of the things I've noticed in the Des Moines metro is that people are starting to respect the fact that the Johnston Arts Council supports Iowa artists, Central Iowa artists, and they've started promoting us and telling people to come out to Johnston and have a look at what we've done. So, the hope would be that we do get good applications from artists from Central Iowa again. So, that's what that ask is for. I'm not sure really how that would be funded, whether it would be funded when we find out how much those sculptures cost. 20,000 is a ballpark number based on the RFPs that we've had in the past. We don't know if people's material costs have gone up in the last year since we did those RFPs, but that is a fairly good estimate. So, it could be under that. And if it was over that, I think either we would get partnership with some businesses or we would fundraise. So, that's what I'm asking for.
Council, any questions? I think the Arts Council is working with DART, aren't you, on what's going to, why don't you tell us what's going on there?
So, we have an artist who has designed a decorative bus shelter. And again, it's a Central Iowa artist and her name's Laura Palmer, I believe. Her, her signature is X-O-L-P. So, it's, it's kind of like cartoon art. And the design was really eye-catching and I think it'd look really great on the shelter. But we asked her to take out 801 grand and to take out the capital and instead replace it with ripples and the Tree of Life. So, she's just done that and then incorporate some color. And she did send in color. We may ask her to change some of the colors before you guys see it, but she'll meet the deadline for DART, which I think is the 15th. Adam might know, 15th of January? Yeah.
But we weren't supposed to see it because the colors are going to change, right? Kind of like the...
Well, you guys might like them and then you might override what... Sorry? I said, keep talking. I'll get it. Oh, okay. Yeah, maybe ask some more questions then.
Anyone else have any questions while we're waiting for the design for the bus shelter to come up?
While that's coming up, I'm sorry, Rhonda.
Well, I was just going to say, I noticed that Urbandale has been putting a lot of our, our, their light bird. And it's beautiful. But it does seem kind of like scattered.
I think so too.
And I think that the thoughtful way, I mean, I am on the Art Council, so I'm trying to, you know, pat myself on the back. But I think the way the art was incorporated into the town center has been really successful in that it's intricate to the town center. And the mural is amazing from blocks away, you know, and the way it's lit. So, I'm hoping that we can be as successful with additional pieces that incorporate, that fit to the scale and into the site and are truly placed and not just hock.
You know, I, I would say that I, I think, you know, it's one thing to talk about, you know, that, you know, art is sort of in the eye of the beholder. So, some people, you know, you look at a piece and think, oh, I love that or I don't like it. And, and I, and I know that people have lots of opinion about what Urbandale has done. But I think you can't fault them for the financial commitment that they've made. And my understanding is, I think they dedicate a certain percentage of their capital improvement budget each year to public art. So, I, I think we might want to think about, you know, we were able to do the ripples because we kind of did it all as part of the, the town center. But if we don't decide, if we don't figure out a way to, to kind, we're not going to do a town center every year. So, we're going to probably struggle to find funding unless we identify or look at some other ways at other communities who waited, put a, an emphasis on public art, how they fund it. And so, I would urge us to, maybe at the staff level, to look at some of the different ways cities have done it and, and sort of figure out if you, if, you know, how you want to do that. Now, it, I mean, that being said, I mean, everything we fund out of the Capital Improvement Project Fund is pretty vital. And so, we, it's all sort of a decision you got to balance. But I do think that, you know, whether you like what a different community has done, I think it is, they should at least be acknowledged for the investment that they've made in it. And, and if we're wanting to do something, if we want to make an investment, we're going to have to figure out a way to how we're going to finance, how we're going to do it. So...
But some have a percentage. Some of them just have a flat fee that they just know that they're going to give their Arts Council each year. But that's usually like in Waki, it's to fund doing their, their Waki Arts Festival. But then they don't really invest in public art. I think our Arts Council is trying to do everything, but also work really closely with the city so that we can get art and attract people to the city. And I don't know, I'm pretty pleased with what...
I think we've made some pretty good progress.
Yeah. And I mean, the...
15 years ago, I think we suggested at a, at a strategic planning and, and did several years in a row. And it's finally taking off. So...
And I mean, the Parks Department have done a fantastic job because they, well, Kerry was amazing helping with the installation, just of the public art walk, which was just, you know, that was a small project, but it was vital and it was really attractive. That worked in with Green Days, but also the gardens that they've put around, the, the little piece that Tom and Judy have donated to the city that's on the corner of their street in Mel Hay. So, yeah, we won't plop any pieces of artwork on the ground. It will all be strategic. Yeah. So, as you can see, now you can see ripples. And I think if you scroll up a little, you'll be able to see the Tree of Life is in there. Actually, the colors have changed since I saw it last week. So, that's good.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out which color you were going to change.
Well, no, the green and the red seems to be more vibrant today. So, anyway, that is what will be coming to you to approve for the bus shelter.
I could have a white ecras. I think that that would maybe...
Change it to like a blue or something?
Just even, even if it were an almond color, the white seems so blank page and...
Yeah, yeah.
It looks a little more cartoony that it scribbles on white, whereas if it had an actual color, I think it would maybe settle a little bit better.
I mean, obviously, that's not exactly what it's going to look like because it has to be able to be seen through. So, I guess once DART get their hands on it and figure out, yeah. But I agree. And Laura does do work that does have like some color incorporated in the background. She works all over town. So, I don't know.
Permeather, I thought that said Merle Haggard. I, I thought it said, I thought it said hat.
Lisa, I just wanted to take a comment again to say thank you, not only for trying to continue to put art in a tangible way in our community, but also your membership has stepped up to every call when it comes to the opening of the town center and to so many of our different events that we already hold in the community about making sure that kids and folks of all ages get a chance to create their own art. So, that's amazing. I appreciate it.
I, I, I think that we'll be stepping it up a lot once COVID's behind us. Yeah.
Well, thank you for everything that you do. Appreciate it. We have two more requests that we need to get through. So, and we've got 10 minutes to do it. So, we're going to have 12 minutes to do it. So, we'll have to talk fast. Next is the Impact Community Action Partnership Financial Request. Yeah, I didn't know if the other one was here. Okay, let's go back to JEDCO.
Quick as possible. I, most of you have been talking with us through the strategic planning piece here. So, I think you have some background on what we're trying to work through. Our request this year is for $45,000 for Johnston Economic Development Corporation. We've, as you all have been aware, we, Phil Duncy was a long-term or longtime executive director of the organization, has left the organization now. We're in a strategic planning piece right now to, brought on, that's why I brought Joe here as well, if there was any questions on that, where we are on the progress of that. The, the JEDCO, as I think you guys are aware, we, we've put on many of the economic development pieces here in the city. We put on the bus tour. We put on the economic forum. We put together many of the political forums that the, the city puts on as well. I guess, Joe, do you have anything in terms of where we are in the progress of the strategic planning right now?
Sure. So, we...
Sure. So we had a retreat in the last, I think it was in December, that we had a retreat to talk through our major objective areas. And then towards the end of the month, we came together on specific themes which are included in your letter, but also talking specifically about the future of JEDCO and the two paths it could take in terms of, like, if we go ahead and hire an executive director, if that's a viable model or if it becomes an advisory board, JEDCO kind of serving in that capacity and what those different models could be. So this year, really, the strategic plan is really geared towards testing, sort of what are some viable membership models? What's the overall sustainability of the organization look like? How does the board function and an active governance structure in a way that's beneficial to the community? And then what kind of membership events and sort of benefits, value adds, return on investments, things like that? So the strategic plan really is built around sort of a test on what does JEDCO look like in the future? How does it evolve so that it's viable and sustainable? And then what are the staffing needs? So a little bit of an investment that is, I'm sure we have some of that. We're just finished with the tactical piece. The next phase is the third phase implementation, where we do some training around the objective teams and committees are going to be working in each one of the areas within the organization.
Yeah, it's going to be mostly seeing in terms of the executive director, whether that is a full-time position, whether that is a part-time position, or whether that is a position that we are going to move with going forward at all. I think you guys were, most of you guys were here, right here, where we're standing here is where we kind of engages. We tried to, first of all, get some engagement from the city itself and some of the business owners and so forth. And then we came in here, we did, we discussed what Joe brought from those findings, and we kind of talked through many of those things. I think we're, you know, it is going to be finding ourselves probably what the organization's going to be moving forward is going to be what we're going to be talking about for the next few months here. With that, I'd be open to any questions you guys might have on that.
So council, any questions?
First off, I want to thank, thank you, and especially you, Brian. I know you've spent a lot of time thinking about what the future of JEDCO should look like. And it's not been easy. It's not been an easy process. You spent a lot of time thinking about, looking at what other communities are doing. So I just, I didn't want the night to go past without acknowledging I think that a lot of time and angst and thought that you put into this. And so I just wanted to pass on my appreciation for that. Second of all, so as you're asking for an increase to 45,000, what is the overall JEDCO budget? And what, I mean, since we don't really know the direction, it's a little hard for us to grasp then what's the, why a 50% increase in funding without knowing what the direction is going to go?
It, for quite a few years, it was a 50-50 relationship between what we were able to gather from the business community, investors and so forth into JEDCO, and then what the city's contribution was. That ended quite a, quite a while back. The annual budget's about, it was about $72,000 the last year. So 45,000, again, we have not went out to gather donations yet because I and the executive board did not feel comfortable going out without a direction and a director in that piece to say, hey, this is the direction we're going and so forth. So we have not started, normally that would begin at the end of November. And in December, we'd really be going out to the folks and gathering that. So until we really get a direction of how we're going, I did not feel comfortable going out to business, you know, and asking for investment on something that we don't have a clear direction on. So does that give you some insight then on that?
Yeah, a little bit. I mean, you know, obviously, the challenge for us is, and we have a limited amount of resources as well. In fact, it was earlier tonight when we had our audit come forward. And one of the things that was, I think, kind of interesting, part of their presentation was we actually, because we reduced our levy last year, which hopefully, I think, is something that all taxpayers in the community should feel good about, we were actually operating with less property tax dollars in the fiscal year that just finished up on June 30 of 2021 than we did the year before. And so, you know, it, our ability to fund different things, plus you have different things with the state policy. The legislature is starting to phase out the amount of money that we receive as property tax backfill. So we're going to lose about $80,000 a year because of that. So there's lots of different financial challenges we have as a city. So, you know, when I first started on the council, our funding level for JEDCO was 20,000, and we've increased that by 50%. Most, most part, most independent agencies haven't seen that 50% increase in time. So it's, I hesitate, I don't want JEDCO to think, well, boy, if they don't give us 45,000, they're not really all in because it will be very challenging for us to increase beyond where we are today. And I think, I think we want, as we explained in that strategic planning session, I think we do believe there's a real role for JEDCO moving forward. And, but where we're able to fund it at is, you know, where we'll end up funding it at.
Yeah, we're, the decision will probably go into how the organization I think it's pretty clear, and I think we, you know, what Phil brought in terms of the costs that he contributed with Iowa Enterprises as well probably can't be done in the same structure that we, I told the people at the beginning that what JEDCO was, the only thing we do know is JEDCO was going to be different. I think that was the only thing that we knew going into the meeting, that it wasn't going to be the same. It was going to be different. How we thought was the, well, I know, that's what you want, is you want it to be better, but it was going to be different. And I think, I think when we were talking about the contribution, that was some of the things. Because I don't know if you can go out and, I'm just being straightforward here. I don't know if you can go out and get the executive director with the budget we're talking about, in the times that we're talking about as well. Because as you're, as you're saying, you know, everyone has limited resources as well. So I think, based on those conversations we had right here, I think it will say something in terms of the direction that JEDCO, of course, goes because of the, of what funds we have available, so.
So if your budget is, so I think what I'm hearing you're saying is that you don't believe that you can hire a full-time executive director on a $75,000 budget? Which is, I'm not sure, I don't, I don't
And of course, you'd have to provide the services, of course, as well, yeah, yeah. So I mean, the primary function of it would be to provide those providing those. Now, again, you know, I think we all understand that economic development, Johnston is competing with every other community in the metro. And they're all, you know, they have limited resources as well. So I mean, it comes and comes and goes in that way. What you put into it is what you get out of it as well, so.
Brian, can you give us a sense of the timing that you have in terms of when you're going to make some final decisions? When you're going to go out to your membership and see what you can raise from them?
Well, again, I think we need to figure out what direction we're going to go first.
And when will that happen?
We went through our, the strategic plan we had here. Then we went, we had the executive committee, and we had members from the city, of course, sit down with us as well. And we went over the findings from that. We're putting out a final strategic plan report, I think is
Next couple of weeks.
Yeah, next couple of weeks. Then we're going to sit down again and figure out, okay, do we have the resource we think we need to go out and look for that executive director? Is that a possibility of what? I think it's still, it's still open that it may be that a, if that's the correct role of JEDCO, or if it is more of something alongs of working with the city in regards of those funds, that's the best way of using it.
Well, I would just encourage you to continue to communicate to us as you're working through your process because, you know, where you're headed will obviously impact, you know, the decisions that we make.
Because, I mean, it's still open that if it's an advisory board, so.
Yeah. Sure. Sure, sure. Any other questions? Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you both.
Okay, we are at 7 o'clock. Did that other individual?
Yes, we have them online.
Oh, okay. Who is it that we have?
Hi, this is Anne Bacon with Impact Community Action Partnership. I apologize for not being there in person. When I read the agenda and it said to participate to join via Zoom, I thought that was required. So I do apologize for not being there in person. Some of you may know Impact through its former name, Red Rock Community Action Partnership. The name was changed about five years ago. We serve families in five counties, including Polk and, of course, the city of Johnston. And we seek to reduce the barriers and burdens that families in poverty experience by increasing access to the essential needs, housing utilities, food, and localized special needs. We have served in the last fiscal year 293 unduplicated families in Johnston. That was including 887 individuals. We kept the heat on for 172 households, provided regular energy assistance for 165 households. And we were able to prevent eviction and homelessness for 131 households in Johnston this past year, including 202 children. 185 of the families we served are at or below 100% of the federal poverty line. What that means is that for a family of four, these families are making less than $26,500 per year. So these are families with extreme financial challenges. And in our ask letter, we talked about the investment we make in the community. Now, that's an average amount of ask across the communities we serve. In direct assistance to the families living in Johnston that we serve, we were able to put $1.5 million directly into the Johnston economy through assisting families with these essential needs. We have asked other communities over the course of many, many years for assistance and including, probably, you've probably gotten letters in the past and it didn't hit the right desk. But we send request letters to all cities and counties of size that we serve. And we base our request on the percentage of income or amount of money we expect to invest in the community. Now, we, like I said, we didn't use the $1.5 million mark for your investment. We looked at what a typical year would be outside of the pandemic. We do expect this year to have over $1 million invested again in Johnston. But the 251, $300,000 is more appropriate for non-pandemic times. And the request is $6,500. That comes to just a little over $7 per individual that we serve in Johnston to meet those most basic needs. It was noted in your notes that we said again this year, I apologize for that. We have not received funding directly from Johnston in the past. That was an error in our letter. But we do look at the work we do in your community as a partnership with both private and public entities, providing essential services to your residents. Lastly, I wanted to offer you, if you were interested in the upcoming year during one of your work sessions, we do a piece of training called Getting By in Polk County that helps explain why people are poor. You know, why is it possible that in a community with a median income of close as high as yours is, how is it possible that 4% of the families living in that community are still in poverty? And I would love to share that information with you at a later date.
Well, thank you. Does council have any quick questions relating to this request?
Anne, this is Brian Burkhart. I do have a question. I thank you for the data that you were able to share and how your organization has served Johnston families and children especially. How do you gather this data? And when you indicate non-duplicative services, is that only within your own organization? Or is that amongst other organizations such as the partnership that's in it?
No, that is only within our organization. For example, you know, the partnership there does an amazing job with their food pantry. We only serve 23 Johnston families with food pantries this year, which is extraordinarily low for any of the suburbs. And that shows that the partnership is absolutely doing a great job filling that food need in the community. The data we collect is, we get a lot, a federal and state funding that requires extensive data collection on the families we serve. This is just a small picture. We can tell you a lot about the folks we serve. We can tell you their base, their ethnicity, their highest grade level of school completed, all types of things. But we are required to collect that data on folks we serve. But yes, these are only numbers of people that we serve through our agency.
And how do Johnston folks get in contact with your organization?
Yeah, during the pandemic, we've been extraordinarily careful. We are very, we have a very low number of staff. You know, the year prior to the pandemic, we served 47,000 individuals with 30 staff people. So we have been extraordinarily protective of our staff and also the families we serve. So we are providing all of our services currently via the telephone or online. We do have in-person appointments available at our Drake location for people who aren't able to access the internet or have cellular phone service. So we are able to conduct appointments. But interestingly enough, those in-person appointments have not been filled fully any given day. People seem to really like the ability to do their business either via the phone or online as they're not forced then to travel across the city. They're not having to stand in line or wait long periods of time. So we've been able to do all of our services via the phone or online.
Thank you.
Any other questions, council? Well, thank you, Anne.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity.
Okay, that brings us to the end of our work session. And we've gone over our time to begin the regular council meeting. We will adjourn the work session. Does anybody need to take a break?